Okay, the first item on the agenda is review request by the village negotiation to annex 70.27 acres of village-owned land located in town along Route 17M. We're going to talk about this on Thursday and the mayor, indoor attorney for the village, will be here to discuss it with us. Dennis Kuplicky, attorney for the town and myself, we met with the mayor and Mr. Donovan to talk about, we had the map, we looked at that and had a pretty good discussion. We were pretty straightforward, honest about what our fears and trepidations were. One is stormwater management and that whatever is built on the infamous dirt pile location where the dirt's been removed, all the roofs and parking lots and whatever, all that water's got to go somewhere, it's going to go downhill and our concern is the bird sanctuary, which is in the town. And so the stormwater waste management is the, going to be the critical item. So we talked about that, that the town has to have some say-sell in this. And Mr. Donovan thought that he could word the annexation such that the town would get equal word in that discussion going forward. The other thing that we talked about was how far down did that property go such that there might be a buffer between it and some businesses in the, in the town? Namely the gas station, the tool outlet, some others down there. And what we found is, is that those are, those properties are flooding up against the village property already. And, and the main one was the, the gas station. And that's owned by Darrell Anderson, was it?
Yes. It may be in a corporate form, but it's Anderson's.
Right. We also found there are a couple of other properties down there owned by Chet LeBarre, under different names. One is the, the, the Goshen Foundry Limited and then the other one had another name I can't recall. But anyway, also in this discussion, and subsequent to this discussion, we, we were talking about lagoons and other things that might want to be at the annexed part, go in. But Dennis brought up to the, to the attorney for the village thing, well gee, what about the, the village sewer plant? I mean, that's right there. It'd make obvious sense that that'd be part of this thing as well. And so, well, that's a great idea. So on Thursday night, I think that that will be included as well. So anyway, it's their, their job to come here on Thursday night and sell the board on this. And we'll see what, have you looked at the verbiage, Dennis?
I have not, it's not.
Okay. But that's where it stands. The village has responsibility, or their attorney, to put in verbiage that, in the annexation proposals that we would sign off on, that would give us the input into the stormwater management.
Yeah, just so the board knows. And that includes, you know, proper that our engineer would review, their engineering work. You know, we have obviously availability to us complete. And I just want to make sure the board understands, it would not be a veto. You know, we're an interested party and I'm sure they would give our comments and our input proper attention, but you don't, but it's not a veto.
When, when the engineer would look at the annex proposal or the-
Subsequent proposals.
The subsequent building proposals?
Subsequent building.
Stormwater management.
Right.
But it would go through their planning board, they would handle all that.
That's right.
Once it's annexed, it's their property, the village.
That's exactly right.
So why would our engineer get involved in that?
Because the village, you know, responding to our concerns was willing to make us an involved party, if you will, to whatever level we saw fit.
Okay.
And it's assumed that depending upon what the project is coming, but you know, for instance, I suggested to the meeting, the, the town might be concerned with maybe a buffer area around the actual building footprint, depending upon what's going to be built there. See, the problem is, you don't know what's coming. And because you don't know what's coming-
You don't know what's coming on any of these properties?
Uh, no, but in terms of an annexation.
Well, the, the way I see it, there are two separate issues. One, the annexation of the property. Once that's annexed, then they have all the responsibilities of the DEC, the engineering, the legal work. We shouldn't have to pay for any of that, just like any other piece of property that's in the town. We don't get involved in all of those things, other than when it comes through our planning board. So if it's a village parcel of property, it goes through their planning board. But I'm, I'm just, I don't want to incur extra expense or reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, I don't worry about that.
No, I'm talking about later on, later on. Once they are annexed with property, they have it. I don't want to, what I'm saying to you is, I don't want to do engineering or review engineering on a piece of property that's gone through their planning board and their engineer.
Well, this will be discussed Thursday night.
Yeah.
I'm just sharing with you what the basis of business, and I mean, and what they, they brought, so, well, you know, maybe your engineer could look at all these plans just to say, yeah, looks good to us, I mean, that kind of thing.
It was, of course, they were at a comfort level with the town.
I understand that, but all property adjacent to the town, our engineers do not review all of those.
That's correct.
The, the, the engineer for the village, it's, it's a village parcel of property, is what I'm saying.
Well, we'll, we'll see what he wants on Thursday and all those things.
I don't want to spend a lot of money reinventing the wheel that they're responsible for. And would we be incurring any expense versus it would be the applicant's?
That's correct.
It wouldn't be us, I would think.
No, that's what we're, that's what-
Well, if you get, I'll put it this way, if you've got a parcel in the village negotiation and it's a development proposal, there's no applicant I know of who'll be willing to pay the town professionals to review it.
Well, that's what the verbiage in this annexation is going to be. They'll know going in if this is part of what it is. I don't know.
If it's going to be proposed.
However, the reason they're coming here to annex that whole parcel is if they sell it and get a rating, whoever they sell it to, one of the attractive parts of that is you don't have to go through two municipalities to get approval. That, and that's how they present it to us to begin with. So, but I'm not arguing for them or against them, I'm just bringing up things that we should think about when it's proposed and like it or not like it, so anyway.
Well, actually, we were the ones who, after our last meeting where these, this concern came up, that we said, well, maybe the best part to pass forward is for attorneys to sit down with the mayor and myself, what can we put in verbiage that would give us the more secure feeling that it's not, we give it to them and all of a sudden it's not done properly and we've got all the bird sanctuary, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, Thursday's another day, we can do what we want to do.
And I think the message, at least what I got from the meeting too Doug, was that the village was more than cooperative.
That's right.
They expressed that. Now, you know, they were like, absolutely, you know, they fully recognized our position and they would want to enter any inquiries we'd have or have us involved in the process.
Right, that's the annexation, I'm just saying to you that they're two separate issues.
No, 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 no.
Not the annexation, they're talking about the-
That was the opposite, not the annexation.
I understand that, but I'm telling you that they're two separate issues.
Oh yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with it, Doug.
Not only you, I'm just telling the board.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
I'm looking at them as two distinct, separate issues.
And, and you know, if you take it on that basis, what I'm, that's what I'm reiterating is that the village was more than cooperative in both instances to involve the town.
Yeah.
Now, they did not say, nor legally can they give you a veto power, but they professed every indication that they would welcome you with open arms, your input, your questions, your participation, and they would try and address any concern we'd have at the annexational level or at the development level.
Okay, whatever. Thursday's another day.
One of the, one of the clarifications for me, I think, I have it straightened out, I think a number of us didn't have it straightened again. You see this yellow line, it kind of fools you to think that it's town, we own the property, but as it stands now, we don't own any of that.
Right, right, that's correct.
That's all village property. It's just the yellow line is the town-village line.
Correct, they, they just wanted to put it into the village.
So it's all, all the village property.
And that's why it came up, right, they're playing all over for the same reason, you know, even in the past, the town normally defers to the village to let them take it to their planning board. You've got a search right to review it, even like their old sewer plant, excuse me, their old, the new sewer plant. And, and the thought is now, look, if you're doing this and it's the same method and philosophy, you might as well take that in also.
Yeah, well, you know, and if, really, when they developed and built their sewer plant, we, we as a board gave them, we had an agreement such that their building department looked over the whole thing, not us, because it was within the village. And so, I mean, this is kind of first cousin to that.
Well, no, because it was within the town, not the village.
But maybe, I'm sorry, it was, it was their property, village property in the town, but, but they, we really legitimately could say, yeah, we're going to overlook that project in our planning board.
Yes.
We said, no.
Yeah, just like that.
Absolutely. So it's the same kind of, it's a continuation of that again. Okay, well, on Thursday, we're going to have another, it'll be on the agenda. Okay, the next item is to establish a date for the visit to Gerda Gardens LDT Limited relative to request to be zone 271 Maple Avenue from RU Rural to SM Soil Mining. And you can see the letter we, or the email we got from John Capella, Jacobson-Gubitz. We said back in February when we looked at this, we would do this when warm weather came about, so. I thought what I'd do is have Neil get with the folks out there and we set up a villa, a, a, a visit, or any particular times that you all would like to.
How soon, or how many days?
I'd say the next week or two. And I was like, I'm thinking Wednesday's a pretty good day. We normally don't have a lot of meetings going on on Wednesday. It's kind of like 10 o'clock in the morning, we all go out there, look at it for whatever and just find the date.
So you, so you have, you know, the 29th is one, I will not be available on the 29th, but how about the 5th of June?
Five, 5th of June.
Okay.
Everybody else okay with that?
Yeah, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. Six, five, 10 o'clock. Very good, okay. That was either you or me. Well, me here and then we'll all go out there in a couple of vehicles. All right, the next item is, the third item, discuss the five sister properties, that's not ready to discuss. And the reason being is, is the, the health department has to go out and do an onsite inspection and then issue their letter and they, they're in that process. So I was hoping by the end of the day today to have an answer to that, I don't, so we'll just do that whenever we get those letters back. This is the letters from the, from the health department, giving those, putting those people on notice, they've got to fix it by a certain date.
Yeah, I think you have a filed copy of one.
I've got one on there that, yeah, is it in your folder here?
It should be.
Yeah, there's one in the folder. That's, that's on the first parcel, the next one I don't have. So we'll do it probably in the next go around. I don't think it'll be ready by Thursday either.
I have one question on that, because I was looking at it when I was at home.
Yeah.
Part of the, the notes on our easement is building the road on our even piece of property and definitely going to have a road, a driveway across the easement to get to that house. Now, those criterias written in concrete are, they're very flexible. If you look at that one house, the driveway to get to that house is of course the easement that they caused the plus.
Correct, there's a reservation in the easement for the driveway.
Yeah, but I'm now, easement's right to say you can't do that. You can't put a road on our easement.
I don't understand.
Is the easement the one that goes along the ditching?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
It is.
But ditching-
I just want to make, I, I just don't want for the present, well, you guys will let you do it and the next guy, I'm thinking more likely.
Well, most times, let me say this, most times your easement's, depending what it's for, most times it's conservation, there are no easements, yeah, for road purposes. You don't want that. This easement is, again, dual purpose, otherwise we couldn't have gotten that additional lot for access to the house. Now, I'm not defending it, I'm just saying to you-
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying, I just want to know what those things, if, that's, to me, in my mind, if that's what you can't do, then you can't do it.
Well, you can't do it on the standard easement, I think in this one, they modified it, so they could do that.
Correct.
It's given, it's, well, I might be wrong, but that's the partial that gives highway and so forth, more leeway off the shoulder for ditching and all that, that's that piece. Isn't it like six or seven?
No, this is the big easement coming right, like an arrow into the property.
But that was the piece, ever that long skinny-
Yeah, no, that, that truly is an easement. This is the easement, which is like an arrow into the property, which provides conservation area, but it also provides a path for them, or whoever the landowner is, to access an additional house or lot.
I don't have a map, so I don't know. I have the, I have the map, I have the map in front of me and I'm looking at the easement and it says it's 4.39 acres. And it has this chrome type of thing all the way through it. The road actually comes in, if this is the parcel, the one that's in it, actually comes in off of Green Crest and it looks like it's on that parcel, looks like it's on that parcel of 5.532 acres.
Not in its entirety.
No. Maybe, maybe this squiggly line is not, I'm looking at that as well.
Is that, is that a rock wall or something like this?
Yeah, see, what I, what I understand is right here, see, this is the easement here, this U.
Right.
That driveway is coming right here.
Yeah, so easement comes over there.
See, the driveway across the easement is also across that property.
Yeah.
But he has to keep this, otherwise he can't get to his house.
He can't get there.
I, no, I, I say that almost like I'm going to announce it.
Easement comes down here and then the driveway.
I thought it came just to here, so it comes over there.
Well, that's one of the things we've got either agree or disagree with.
You know, because I'm, I think, you know, the other, when I was turning it out, or asking for major concessions from us also.
Right.
Because he doesn't, the criteria-
Yeah, in theory, every easement's different, it's just a question of what you want to allow.
I just wanted to clarify, in my mind, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but the Congress is also true, I mean, just because you have an easement, doesn't mean it's absolutely no road construction.
Remember I said, you know, are they flexible?
Yes, they are.
I have another value that I'm asking, is the next one, except for some rules.
Well, yeah, just expanding on what you said, what you're thinking or what I'm thinking, that's not an easement for a pipeline or a, or a something or other, that's just an easement across our whole easement because of the conservation, correct? Is there, is there, what's the specific easement order we're talking about?
The specific easement, you see, one of the things I was, two easements. There's the easement for conservation purposes, which we give to the town, nerves and open space.
That's what they-
Across or on top of that easement is a right for a driveway.
Right.
That's another easement.
But what I'm saying to you is, his easement for the driveway would go over just plain land, it wouldn't go over an easement for piping or access or anything else.
Yeah, probably not-
Now, we have it strictly for the conservation purposes.
Yes.
He's just putting a road.
Yes, rather than an open area or a field or trees or grass, you'd have a driveway.
But Phil brings up a good point, are they going to put natural gas or electric underground or some other kind of thing on that property?
Right. I don't know how they get it there now, you know?
Well, that's why I'm, I think it's a very good question.
I don't know where that stuff is.
I don't know. And, well, you know what? When I get this next letter back from the Department of Health, I think we need to investigate that a little bit and get the answer to that.
See, I would hope that the planning board, I don't know what they did, to address the hurdle.
Well, I'm going to talk to Neil, that's what I was saying, I'm just going to go talk to Neil, say, what's in that, in addition to the rough driveway, what's in there?
Yeah, and then, not because of the labor point, but you also have concern as to visually what that driveway will look like, in terms of ditching, surface area width, in terms of the aesthetics out there, you know? And see, once again, when you talk about easement, especially conservation, you think of very attractive aesthetic areas, this could just be open space. This could be a rock or shale, for all I know, I don't, I don't know, you know?
That's more than likely what it will be, is grown up, uh-
Yeah. And maybe just when we take, uh, conservations or open space, it means it's going to be attractive, it's not going to be built on space.
No, open space is open space. And as we go a little further and further and there are fewer farmers to farm, it is going to grow into woods, et cetera.
Racked and ruined, basically.
Okay, good discussion.
Thank you.
Yep. But I will talk to Neil on that one, find out if there's anything else included in that. Did you ever get back, was it, hear back from the attorney on the A and L acres?
I did not. I, I told Doug today, I spoke with him, he said that he had relayed all of the concerns to the applicant and the engineers and they were to address the issues, and the board knows they were supposed to bring us text, if you will, but he said to me that he really didn't know what their conclusion was, he'd have to reach out to them and he would get back to me. And I told him, look, if you don't get back to me, it's not the end of the world, we're not doing anything.
Well, and we also, he thought, well, maybe they wouldn't even do it.
That's possible.
Right, okay. Very good, all right, well, we'll put-
This has to be a stipulation, this is, this is signed by the court, right? This stipulation at A and L.
Well, that's already been done.
That's already been done, to modify it-
This is not going to be modifying.
This, this would be modifying and taking out the issuance of the house.
No, different, different project.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's right, that's right. A and L, alphabetically, the next one.
A and L is on Houston.
No, uh, no, it's across the road from Houston. This is the one-
Up in that area, yes.
It's, it's on Houston Road on the white-hand side of Houston.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Wrong one.
No, no problem.
Put the right two in.
Well, we may or may not see this again on Thursday night, depends on what we hear from the office.
Yeah, it's time, and in fairness, I'm sure the folks appreciate the town, this concern is in the heart of the development. The developer is what basically is going to sell the piece without a lot of restrictions and there's a natural conflict there, and so they may or may not even pursue it.
Okay, the next item is, is to review and approve the town negotiation road improvement plan for 2013. So, Robert, you feel the Hossi is right there, guy? And, would you, uh, like? By the way, I just got to say, I love this layout. I mean, we're getting, in the past, I mean, this is a step up, you know, in terms of dollars and this and that and everything else, it really is good.
Well, thank you.
It's pretty obvious, you put a lot of work and thought into this.
All right, so, obviously the major road improvement program, road for this year would be Old Chester Road, that's a fairly long section. When you include the Old Chester Road extension, it's about 1.8 miles. There is a lot of preliminary work to do there. There were a lot of original box culverts, concrete box culverts that were there back when that was Route 17, Old Route 17. And unfortunately, those box culverts ended right where the pavement stops. So, you know, at one time, there was no shoulder at all on that. Since that time, many of them had pieces stuck in one end and pieces stuck in the other end, which, so that they could gain some shoulder, but that's not a proper way to get a pipe to function where you're going from round to a large rectangular area and trying to get that flow back to a round area. So we want to get all of that fixed before we do anything that-
And how long will it take to do all of that?
Um, that's going to take several weeks, probably three weeks. We have, so if we go down this list, we have some jetting and vacuum to services to clean once we open these up. These are box culverts that as you start to uncover them, they'll actually have pieces of slate on top of them, old sidewalk slate. We're going to open those up and put culvert all the way through them. We have a large pipe which is at the Iron Hill Tributary, right by Corey's and Duck Farm Road there. That's approximately a six-foot diameter culvert pipe that the bottom is rotted out, so we will replace that.
Is that metal?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, once we get all that stuff done, we intend to do what's called a full depth reclamation of the road, and that would be grinding up the entire road, shaping that, stabilizing that with calcium chloride, once that's all graded off, and that will become our new base. And then we will top that with a binder, which, a binder is a heavier stone asphalt mix. And the reclamation part will just go from an old road straight to the village line. When we pave it, we will go over and pick up that extension to Route 17M and put a layer over Duck Farm Road. And so all of that will be all tied in and done. Now, that doesn't finish off the road forever, that binder is, will, in the future, need to be sealed, you know, either by a chip seal or some other method in a year or two So the costs are there, obviously it's an expensive proposition. The, the paving that's listed here at 295 is not us doing the paving. That's a little bit big for our favor. Obviously, it's over 4,200 tons there, so considering that our trucks hold nine or 10 tons, that's a lot of trucks, so.
The extension, it's also including the extension near the driving range to, right?
Yes.
I'm not intention, yeah. I just-
Well, actually, that's the, the Old Chester.
Yeah.
And that is right there at that intersection. Just includes that in, in the-
So both, both exits to 17M, if you want to call it, or Old Chester will be completed.
Right.
Now, is Duck Farm Road, is that in bad shape, is it?
It's in very bad shape. We were, we were going to reclaim it, but it's, it's .18 miles. It added about $6,000 to the reclamation and it would have added, I don't know, $5,000 in estate renovation, but we chose not to do that, we'll just-
Sure, well, it doesn't get much traffic.
No, it doesn't.
Well, she not even knocked there.
Really? Okay.
All tires.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'm putting a little contingency there, the sub balance or revenue balance A is at $124,000. Six and a half Station Road and G-Chunk Road, last year we finished T and L-ing six and a half station and we did about 3,000 feet of G-Chunk. That is the section from the bridge, or from the intersection near the bridge at Cypress Lane and brings you right across the intersection of six and a half Station Road and we went up further. That will all be sealed, stone shown there. And then, we would put our attention to Phillipsburg Road, this is kind of the start of a, of a long process, Phillipsburg, we certainly noticed that that road is getting a lot more traffic because of the hospital. The section in, from the intersection of Owens Road to the Wallkill Town Line is the worst section.
Yep.
So it is our intent, we have some pipe work, which, some of that pipe work is on the section closer to the village, but item number two under Phillipsburg Road, true and level, .62 miles from Owens Road to the Wallkill Town Line, we felt we could take care of that with the desire next year to pave that. The section of road from Old Men's Sink Trail to the bridge on Owens Road or to Smith Road right around there, that is, that's not in-
It's not in bad shape.
In bad shape. And we thought we could T and L that possibly next year and then chip seal that the following year.
Yeah, it's not in bad shape.
We, we've been getting a lot of people calling about that extension over there. A lot of people in the village use that road.
Which one?
The, the, this .6 mile of Phillipsburg that goes near Tents, that's the real bad one. That's where we did the cleanup, the water.
Yeah, that one.
It's very bad, it's windy, it's choppy.
Bad shape.
And, and the traffic, because I monitor some of the traffic, the traffic has increased ever since the hospital is there.
Oh, it's huge.
And it is a good, it is a good shortcut for the village, the people on the outskirts where I live and so forth will go to the highway, because you get to the highway quick. But anybody in the village is going that way.
They go that way.
And it's very, it's more travel now than ever.
Much more.
All right, so.
I can attest to that.
We figure with the dollars we, if I could talk to you, with the dollars we have, it just fit in perfectly with the dollars we have left. Am I right in saying that?
Yeah, we couldn't do the entire-
Couldn't T and L the entire road.
Right. Doesn't need it.
The, the entire road, but that section you said that was the worst, is the worst. Well, and, but just remember, we're just T and L-ing it.
Yep.
So, I, item two is, we're going to definitely T and L that .62 miles, and item three is, we're going to use $35,000 of residual, and we're going to do what we can from Old Minnesota to the bridge.
Once again, that's not as bad as you.
No, not that.
Now, I've got a question.
Very good.
In these last ones, Six and a Half Station, G-Chunk, and Phillipsburg, you don't have contingency. Now, if you ran into some additional costs, that third item on Phillipsburg, would it be that one that you'd knock off?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, too. I put the contingency in Old Chester just because of the scope.
Well, it's bigger, but I'm just working with these two. But in reality, what you're spending is $501,000, which is great for road, you know, reconstruction within the Town of Ocean.
Absolutely.
Spent many, many years since we've done anything this large.
Yes, to that magnitude, absolutely.
So, uh, Phil and I, when we did our budget this year, put more money in the road program.
Yep.
And here it is. Now, one item, this, we're going to talk in a few minutes about the $267,000 of the FEMA money, you know? I guess, have you talked to Bill about, I mean, this year roads, we had to front that money to the 267. Don't, no guarantees we'll get it this year, but it will be spent this year, because the work will be done this year. What was his, I know he's got another contingency for the A fund, is that where he's going to take this fund, or the DB fund?
No, I think, I think he felt, especially since the 267 was a lot less than the 472 we were bracing for.
Right.
So, I think he felt that.
Well, you take a half a million here and you take 267 there, you've got 3/4 of a million dollars. What I'm saying is, is that, I mean, you're within 10,000, 13,000 here. Does Bill have, too, the contingency in the DB fund where this money comes from? Does he have enough money to pay for all of this, the road and the culvert?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. I feel good.
Yep, really, yes.
I love this detail.
Reclamation is a house, is the outside firm, you bring that reclamation?
It is an outside firm.
Right.
The company called Reclamation?
Yeah, Joe, Charlie Joe. Charlie Joe, yeah. Yeah, he did, uh, well, back in the day, was, did all West Nation.
I mean, he did that.
Yeah, you did some on Reservoir.
Reservoir, Arcadia.
Went up there in the Black Year, what was it, one of them?
Saloon.
No, no, the last one we did, 287.
Jess, Jess.
Who did the Arcadia, or who did the Arcadia rub last year?
The second part was.
Well, now, remember, Arcadia was not reclaimed, it was recycled.
Okay.
Two different processes.
That was a different.
We did Gate Schoolhouse, that was 2011, and we did Gate Schoolhouse in 2012.
Different company.
Different company, um.
Different browser.
A company that, Charlie's, Reclamation is a company that is owned by Peckham Materials. Charlie works for Peckham Materials, and, uh, Peckham also has now the capabilities to do cold-in-place recycling. They do, uh, they use a little different materials and a little different process, but they, they do do that.
Now, did you get an answer to the failure on Arcadia Hills Road?
No, that's, uh, that work was done by Gorman Brothers. We have marked out, and we're going to call for the appropriate, uh.
Soil bores or whatever.
Digs, so that there's no utilities involved, and then they're going to schedule to come in and do the bores.
Okay.
And we'll check out what that is. I have a feeling, I'm, I'm obviously hoping it was second phase and not the first phase.
Okay. All right, any questions regarding this?
Yeah.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
One question, and we were, just to check, we're on to our, we're not on Old Chester, is there a time where that will be closed to the public, for a period of time, or, I heard you say something about three weeks for the work, so.
Where, look, listen, he's going to do it. Well, I don't think, I don't think you'll close the road, it'd be like Gate School Road, we had one line open, didn't we?
Well, this will be a little different, we are going to have to close it to change that big culvert, but that'll just be between Duck Farm and, and.
Okay, well, that's a good question, that's all.
Good question, good question.
We have plans to do the other culvert and not close the road.
All right, would someone like to make a motion that we accept the highway improvement program that's presented? So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, do we roll a call vote on this, please?
Counselman Cantorino?
Aye.
Counselman Lyons?
Aye.
Counselman Newball?
Aye.
Counselman Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye, motion carries.
Good job.
And a good, a good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, good luck.
I appreciate it.
Well, we know what you're going to be doing.
Before you, before you leave.
You've got a son brother, so everything out there.
Before you leave, uh, because this is one of your employees, uh, this afternoon, a late, Louise Glancy came in, she lives out in Scotch Town Park, and is two with the Bloomfield. I just want you to know that Mark Warren is doing a great job. The water's much cleaner now compared to a year ago. And she had talked to me about this before, and the fact, since we put in that new storage tank and all the things we did, it's continuing to getting cleaner. The thing is that we flush the lines over and over and over again, and I was in her house like four years ago, and then her husband would change the filter, and before your very eyes, it would turn black. It was that quick. And now she said they can go, uh, was it a week? Month, month, a month without it having to be changed.
That's great.
They used to change it every week, and he was changing it once a week, but he could have changed it every five hours.
Right.
So, anyway, Mark has got the credit, he's a good man, and people love him in the community.
Absolutely, they do.
And we've got, uh, we've got several people who walk up to us that were, that are using it.
Yep. Standlight, yeah.
Was, uh, Farfala, the senator, um, the state trooper, John.
Yeah, Vandermore.
John Vandermore, and the guy who came here, Popsidero, was it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Popsidero, so he was doing it.
Well, it's a real success story, because of the course.
Yes.
Everything's been rebuilt except the lines themselves. And from an engineering perspective, you get that silt and stuff in the bottoms of those lines and then around the, on the inside coating of those lines, it takes a while for that to flush away.
Right.
And, uh, because it's encapsulated there, and so it's, we're working it down.
We've come a long way since 2006, when we had, when we had those.
They weren't nice, 34 people there.
That's why we had the crowds in here.
Yeah.
Nobody.
Right. But anyway, in fact, would you pass this on? I want.
Yeah, I'll make sure that.
Okay, and, uh, all right, the next item is, review and accept the winning bid for the replacement of the Hartley Road culvert. You can see in your packet, dated May 14th, subject is the Town of Ocean, Orange County, Hartley Road Culvert Replacement. And you can see that the number one bidder that is being recommended to us is Sullivan County Paving, Cechet in New York, $267,966.79. Now, Dennis, we can do this with a motion, can we?
Yes.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion that we accept the Sullivan County Paving, Cechet in New York, uh, bid replacing the Hartley Road culvert, uh, at a cost not to exceed
A more?
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, because I didn't have time to review this, because I got in late. The 267, uh, he's doing everything, I'm sure he's doing everything that's on the RFP and everything else, and there's no shortcuts here, I just want to get that, because when you see 267 versus the high bidder of 569, you always ask question, well, how was one $300,000 more? So, I just want to make sure that the number one bidder is doing everything that is in our specs and so forth, just like it would have been for the other people.
I did not see the bids, obviously, that was Sean. One thing that gives Sullivan County Paving a little advantage is they do have an asphalt plant, and they do have a concrete plant. So, uh, this job has massive quantity concrete in it, um, so some people felt that that was.
Bad.
An advantage, although they still have to get it here, I mean, obviously, but, um.
Well, if we go with the last statement from our engineer, in, in a summary, in conclusion, we believe the Town of Ocean received a competitive proposal for the work contemplated. The low bidder has the capability to perform the required work, and if the attorney, Caplicky, advised that the bid documents are illegally sufficient and funds are available, an award can be made to the low bidder, so, uh, Sean Huff, he's looked at this, I mean, he doesn't have a crystal ball, but he's looked at it and said, you know, everything being equal, uh, he got a bet on the.
I suspect, but I just wanted to ask, ask the question, so it's on record, people know.
And there was a wide range of bids, there were 12 bids.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, all different, it wasn't just one or two bidders, and we had to select, we had 12 legitimate bids.
One is $569,000, I'll think about that, all the way down to 267.
That's why, so Dennis, everything is, as it says here, in a legal review, uh, determination of legal sufficiency.
Yeah, structure is fine, the documents are fine, uh, as far as whether funds are available, I'd rely on.
Well, that's what I asked Robert a moment ago, and we'll, if they're not, we'd have to get them somewhere, but, yeah.
I have a silly question.
Yeah.
What happened, you have almost a little, you have from 569 to 267, um, what happened if you can't really put the project together? He's halfway through the project and realizes, guess what? I can't finish this project, and they walk away, he's got a bond.
He's got a little bond. You have a contract claim against him, which you'd have to go out and finish it, try and hold him responsible.
But, you know, you can't go from the high to the low, look at the next guy, he bid $16.
Yeah, he was close.
He was close, the next guy's $350.
Yes, well, the real analysis is why he would lower, other than just the.
Well, he has his own plans, and that's what I had heard.
The economy's the scale, they can take it.
But he's not that much lower than the next bidder.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're all relatively.
What's actually interesting about it is, if you look at the last page, he beat the pants off everybody on the, uh, all work except the ladders and the other price items. When, when you look at, um, shoulder base, bituminous, type III, type VI, he's the cheapest.
Yep.
There's other people there that beat him.
Sure.
But it's such a small amount of the bid.
Right.
So, he, he really, he really came in with the, uh, with the work, where he, that's where he beat everybody else out.
Yeah.
I just, Dennis, not just this part, how we protect ourselves, we're.
Well, you.
The other performance bond.
Okay, good.
And it's not a foolproof, you know?
No, we're always, and you're, if things have fallen, if it tell apart on us, it wouldn't be the first one.
That's right.
Well, no, I meant being a construction worker like you, contractor, and to pull back as they see.
No, no, you're right. But the other thing we've got going here is time, is the essence. We've got to get going, we've got to spend this money as profit, right? We're saying, we've got to move this thing along, otherwise it could, uh, go bust. And of course, the, the, the last thing is, if you said Sullivan, you don't got it, then we got a problem, right?
Potentially.
He's going to do it.
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
Well, but the next one is very close, so it's a big deal.
The big thing is Sean's, uh, certainly, I guess, qualitatively, you know, he's.
Well, that's why we, that's why we hire a PE, yeah, professional engineer, look at this, experience. All right, Madam Clerk, do we roll a call vote, please?
Counselman Cantorino?
Aye.
Counselman Lyons?
Aye.
Counselman Newball?
Aye.
Counselman Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye, motion carries. We're ready to roll.
Thank you for that information.
Okay, the next one is, information just from the Town Board, and the Town staff are invited by the Ocean Memorial VFW Post 1708 to participate in Memorial Day Parade Monday, May 17, 2013.
May 27?
May 23.
May 27?
I'm sorry, I'm looking the wrong address, May 27, 2013.
Okey dokey.
Yeah.
Well, if you want to change it, though.
No, no.
Well, he's been crying. I reckon.
I cried twice.
They're all, that's okay.
Yeah, okay. That does inform you that that, uh, we've been, we've been invited. And I think that that might have been in your mailbox, and then it kicks off at 10:00 or 11:00, I'll have to dig it back out, okay? The other thing for information, Assemblyman James Sculpus will be holding a monthly meeting here in Town Hall. It's coming Thursday, 23rd, 6:30 to 7:30, and, uh, just for the, and you can see his flyer in the packet.
Yep.
So, with that, that, is anybody else having for the formal meeting itself? If not, would someone like to make a motion to go into executive session with the intent not to return, to talk about the Hampton Road update, it's a legal matter, ADC Orange Water Sewer Negotiations, which we're going to do on Thursday, uh, and we're going to talk a little bit about the, uh, stipulation renewal, which is a legal item. PD Personnel Case Update, Jedi Update, which we've come under negotiation, Faith at All versus the Town of Ocean, which is a legal matter, that's the soup down in the Walkill River. Planning Board Membership, we've got potential resignation, I need to get your input. And then, just El Carpo Limited, legal matter, is the update on that.
And I would like, appreciate it, if you could add to that the Mars litigation, I'll give you an update.
Okay.
Uh, and also our, uh, no, that'd be it.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
A more?
Second.
All payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Intend not to turn, to return, it's like the intent not to go home and go to sleep tonight.
No, I think these are going to be quick. Over my life. No, I would like a my sandwich.